To order, please call the roll call. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso? Bukai?
Here.
Wally?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Marshfield?
Here.
Vernal?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Scott?
Yes.
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Wagner? Hinckley? Wilson?
Here.
Kosher?
Here.
Leighton? Sada?
Here.
Malay?
Here. Please stand and join us in the invocation by Pastor Light and the pledge to the flag supervisor Driscoll. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you this afternoon and we come before the throne of grace. And we thank you that there is mercy and grace to help us in the time of our need. We pray for the 44,000-plus people in Delaware County, asking for your blessing upon them. We pray for the widow, we pray for the widower, the children, the single parents, the families, and ask that you will drop clothes and just give them a new sense of hope during the season. Father, we thank you for the leaders in this room, for the communities that they serve. And we pray that you will bestow favor upon them and their families. And Lord, for this group here, we pray that you'll give wisdom as they make decisions that will benefit and promote goodness to the people they serve. So Father, we just bow before you. We invite your presence into this meeting and pray you'll go before us, guide us and direct us. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes from last month. First set of minutes is the public hearing on the budget. Can I have any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they will stand as submitted. And our regular meeting held on November 26th, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they will stand as submitted. Communications? All communications have been referred to their respective committees for review. There is no privilege of the floor this afternoon. Standing committee reports. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. First resolution, number 200.
I bring this resolution up and move for its adoption.
Second.
2024 Budget Amendment Voting Machines Board of Elections. Any questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher? Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 201.
I'll bring resolution number 201 to the floor and move for adoption. I'll second.
2024 Budget Amendment Sheriff's Office Correctional Facility. Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 202.
I'll bring resolution number 202 to the floor and move for adoption.
2024 Budget Amendment Department of Emergency Services. Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution 203.
I'll bring resolution 203 to the floor and I will second.
2024 Budget Amendment Department of Emergency Services. Questions on this? Please call the roll. Roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Kai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution 204.
I will bring resolution 204 to the floor and ask for its adoption. Second.
2024 Budget Amendment Equipment Purchase and Office Expenses Department of Mental Health. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield? Marshfield? Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 205.
I will bring resolution 205 to the floor and ask for its adoption. Second.
2024 Budget Amendment Transfer of Funds Department of Mental Health. Questions on this resolution? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
I go, this kind of goes along with that previous resolution passed about 100,000.
We talked about this a couple of times where it used to be the state shared 50% of the inpatient care. Now they passed it on 100%.
Yeah, I thought it was the same thing.
Yes.
Resolution number 206.
I bring this up and move for its adoption. Second.
Change order number three of proposal number 27 of 22. Replacement of the Arbor Hill Road Bridge over the Little Delaware River, town of Delhi, county of Delaware. Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone? Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 207.
I bring this resolution up and move for its adoption.
Second.
And I have a couple of comments to make on this one. On the third page, I mean, the town of Oakwood Park, where East French Water District is listed. There's a typo on that number that should be 31.13 cents there that were not there. Okay? Also, just for a point of interest, you will notice among any fire duty that says zero, but they are in the pros of perhaps the city. And Sullivan County is part of the district in Delaware County. And Sullivan County did not fund them because they did not have the paperwork signed. At this point, they sent us a letter, they're not requesting any funds. So that's why that's.
That was the delay for the meeting. We wanted to make sure that all these numbers are correct.
Right. And I certainly hope these numbers are correct because in about two minutes, it's not going to make any difference.
Any questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 208.
I bring 208 up and move for its adoption, please.
Second.
Levy of County Tax Extension of Roll Warrants for Same. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay? Resolution number 209.
And I bring this one up and move for its adoption. Second.
Authorizing the clerk of the board of supervisors to cause to be printed a summary of abstract of town budgets. Questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay? Yes. Resolution number 210.
I'll bring this one up and move for its adoption.
It sure is. I'll second it. 2025 Board of Supervisors Meeting Schedule. Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 211.
And I bring this one up and move for its adoption. I'll second it.
Call an organizational meeting. Organizational meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025 at 1:00. So voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 212. Bud, a second?
I just have a question.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Bud, does this match our deputies?
Yes, sir. Deputies and correction officers that believe are 25 or 20-year retired.
Okay, yes, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
These are not debatable.
Amy, this resolution's identical to where we started our conversation in. Amy, is that what we're talking about? It's the original one which isn't right.
Right, yeah. This isn't right, yeah.
You altered some wording. The figures are different.
It'll just take a minute.
And I don't want to give my figures because they're rounded off.
Right, with no sense.
He doesn't have much sense.
They can stink around with any night round.
While we're waiting, I'd like to thank Vev Shields for making the delicious Christmas cookies.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any last two minutes?
I was just thinking I should hit him pretty hard. Real soon. It wouldn't be too late. Our chairman of the committee.
One comment. We're waiting on this last amendment from the Harper Committee where we disseminated that they need to know. And I would like to publicly thank Wayne Marshfield for a superb job operating that committee for the last two years.
I'll second that. As a member of that committee, I echo that same statement. Wayne did a great job. It was a pleasure being on that committee. Really did.
Don't ever expect me to do that quality job again. I'm getting old.
We all are, Wayne.
Speak for yourself, Art.
You gonna put some shakes?
No, I don't.
So, has everybody got the Christmas shopping done?
Yep.
You'll have to ask my wife.
He's called for vacation.
There's 14 days left.
Yeah, why would you get nervous yet?
What'd you give John?
Yeah. It's your I.O.
Yeah. You had movies like 40 years old now.
Okay?
No.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I love that movie.
What's they share?
Christmas Story. I do not. Yeah. They showed it on the big screen in town yesterday, but I was involved in a meeting made every month. I show an old movie on the big screen, but this week, this month, they're doing two Christmas movies a week. It's just fun to see them on the big screen. That's the money. You just give a donation, that's the money maker.
I thought you straightened that resolution out, Amy.
I did.
As far as the ARP committee, we had our last meeting earlier so that we could close out the figures and allocate every dime that we could. And we did that, but we, you know, we've just burned time. We owe Hancock Telephone $197,005. Now you're talking 8.6 million we started with. This hasn't been spent yet. Hancock Telephone $197,005. Delhi Telephone $29,515. We allotted just shy of a million for them and they've got that yet to spend. And they've all assured me that they would spend this money. Cornell Cooperative Extension, we just allocated $200,000. That's not spent, obviously. Village of Delhi Wastewater, $37,500 is to be spent. And Delaware County Planning for the Comprehensive Plan has $150,000 to spend. And the county clerk has $54,900 to spend. And the county clerk has $54,900 to spend. And then we've got this resolution, which is shy of $30,000 to spend and allocate to the County Historical Association.
So Penny's passing out the
Yeah, this is the
The real thing.
Thank you. No pressure, right, Penny? Okay, are we set, Penny? We're good. Wayne, that looks like the right wording.
Yep. Yep, that's what we agreed on. And that'll zero all the fund.
And so this is not prefiled, resolution number 13.
213.
213, right. Okay, we have three not prefiled resolutions. I will waive rule 10 without objection. Resolution number 213.
I'll pull that up and move for adoption.
I'll second that.
2024 Budget Amendment Appropriation and Reallocation of American Rescue Plan Funding.
So essentially, we're allocating $28,985.47 to the Delaware County Historical Association.
Any questions on this?
We're allocating the $8,500 plus the $20,000, which is $28,985.47. Huh? In my figures, it's $985.
No sense.
No sense.
Okay, Penny, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ellis?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Resolution number 214.
I bring this resolution up and move for adoption.
I'll second it.
Levying of 2024-25 Return School Taxes, Treasurer's Office.
Just as a reminder, this is one reason we have to have some fund balance because we need $7 million to pay unpaid school taxes.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?